Wow. All right, I will call this meeting to order at 5:17. And we are acknowledging AB 361. So this meeting will be hybrid on Zoom and in person. And then now we will open it up to comments from the public on closed session items. So if anyone has a public comment on any of the three closed session items, please put your first and last name in the chat and we will hear from you and it'll be great. Cool. No one here is in, no public is here in person. So with that, I will adjourn us to closed session. I reconvene us to open session at 6:01 PM. Board member Jen, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Wonderful. We have nothing to report out of closed session, so we will move into our public hearings, which we have two tonight. So let's start with a public hearing on the review of the adopted budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
It's not lost on me that I think this is the first time I get to go first. Is it because it's my second to last board meeting? I don't know. I don't know. So anyway. I have some extra binders. Matthew, do you need a binder? Nope. Here. For those of you in the audience, I charge $5. It's the only way that in the business office, we can raise money for t-shirts. Okay, so. It has been a long budget development season, I have to say. I just want to acknowledge right off my team. Christine Thompson, my budget coordinator. Debbie Barbaris, our accountant, has just worked tirelessly with me. Terry Ryland and Associates, Ormedes in particular, who spent Saturday with me. It was a fascinating journey and I'm so glad we got here. So I'm going to walk you through the PowerPoint and then we're going to kind of go back and forth with the budget binder, which you know, I love our budget binder. I guess I should keep one. And tonight, I'm happy to say I found a mistake. So, and you know, I like to be transparent about all things. So let's go through the PowerPoint. Dave. I founded, I. Yeah, I called Matthew. I called Matthew. I said, do you want the good news or do you want the bad news? On Saturday morning about 11 o'clock, he says, give me the bad news. I said, the bad news is I made a mistake. So we'll walk through and I'll show you that. I tried to blame it on Jason because that's usually. Okay. So this is where we were with the, with, well, this is where our adopted budget ends up. And then we'll go into more of the details. So I'm sorry, the font is so small, guys. So total revenues. For those of you who can't see like I, about, and this is just unrestricted, about 71 million, 71.5 million. Total expenditure is 70 million. And that means an excess. Would you like some of these? I was ordering them all to myself, Matty. It's just so you can see what's on the. Because much like I'm about to become a retiree, Ellen, I know how it's, you know. Anybody else who can't see these small numbers in the audience? Don't be shy, it's okay. So excess of expenditures, it should say revenues over expense, $1.5 million ongoing. Where is Sandra Larson when I need her? Beginning fund balance, 10.7 million or 10,740,320. Ending fund, ending fund balance, 12,227. That means we have reserves of 9.46. That's super important because remember last year we got going concern because we had over our 10% reserves. And remember, we're still in test one for 2324, which means we cannot have over 10% reserve. So that's super important. That's why I had it here that we're still under our 10% reserves this year. So that's a good, that's a good news. And just to note, South County reserves of that 12.227, 1.439 is South County. Okay? So remind, refreshing our memory, two weeks ago preliminary budget, this is how we looked, right? We had revolving cash of 30,000. South County reserves, that 1439 doesn't change. Or designated, we did not have our additional 2%. We were below that 2% by about 439,000. This was the test I mentioned to you guys. So our reserve at 3% or 3.9 million, we maintain that. And the total ending fund balance at that time was just over 4.3, almost 4.4 million dollars. Now that's different than what I just told you. Those of you math folks, class of math following along. So what changed? Because now this adopted budget, $30,000 in revolving cash, South County reserves, 1.439 hasn't changed. Restricted learning recovery money, 2 point, almost 2.1 million, just over 2,822. We are setting that aside. That's a difference and I'm going to show you this in the spreadsheets. We took out that 32% that the governor in his may revise said we're slashing by 32%. We took our expenditures down and restricted. We're setting it aside in the restricted ending fund balance. If it gets restored, which it might, I know the, the budget committees were saying, no, don't cut it. Then we can easily restore it, but we set it aside in the restricted balance here for all to see. We have restored our 2% reserve for economic uncertainties and now we have 12.27, 12,227,000. So what changed? I'm about to explain to you. This was the good news, bad news that I told Matthew. Banker, mean chest. Thank you're in your favor. But instead of collect $200, collect 4.3 million. So I have literally been working from 7:15 every morning until 6:30 every night for the past three weeks, trying to figure out why, trying to answer this question because it didn't sit with me. I knew our ADA dropped, I knew the three-year average dropped. And I knew that we weren't getting our 8.22% in COLA. I mean, I knew we were getting the COLA and I knew that from a dollar perspective, that wasn't going to pencil out for us. Our revenue was not going to go up 8% or 8.22%. Because our ADA was dropping by 170 ADA next year, 60 ADA almost this year. So combined 200 and someone ADA. So we knew that, but it didn't pencil out that it would drop so significantly. So you remember, we're five different organizations, we're two districts, we're three charters, plus we're an independent charter. Good luck, guys. And so we have to do all these different LCFF calculations and then we have to combine them all together to create one budget. So as I went back through and redid our LCFF and we also have been fine tuning our enrollment, working with Matthew, how many enrollment should we, how much should we project for the out years? Because we've been working on our LCF, our enrollment projections, getting ready for our multi-year projections, et cetera. How many more TK do you think we'll have in the next coming year? How many more K-12 or nine through 12 or seven through 12 graders? Because we know we've got all this development on the east side of town, right? And we are starting to see more. Justin and I just talked today about Kennelworth. Yep, he's got 30 more kids, 25 more kids. I've been on the phone with Gio. Yep, he's got 40 more kids. Instead of 1180, we're going to bump him to 1225. So having these conversations real time with all of the secondary principals. So we know we're going to be moving up. So I've been tweaking the LCFF projections. And so as I've gone in and I've been looking at all of the five different LCFF projections, I've been relooking at them. So one of the challenges that I have is in our elementary is that it wasn't doing the in lieu tax calculations correctly. And well, I'm going to explain it right now. So. So there's this thing called in lieu tax. So you know how there's components in the LCFF, there's state aid, there's EPA Education Protection Act 8012 object, and we'll look at the spreadsheet. So I'll explain them to you in numbers. There's local property taxes and then we have to do in lieu tax calculations for all of our various charters, including our independent charter. And we have two charters in the elementary and we have two charters in the secondary district. And we have to do calculations that show how much taxes, how much of our local property taxes they're entitled to. And so in the elementary district, we do that. And in the secondary district, we do that. And those in lieu taxes reduce our local property taxes. And that on the natural then bumps up our state aid. So we're held harmless in that we don't lose any money. Of course, with our internal charters, our dependent charters, it's a wash anyway because it goes in, it comes out, fine. But Live Oak is our independent charter. We're sending them money, it goes directly out. And I'll show you that when we get to the spreadsheets. But then our, our state aid backfills that. So what was happening in our elementary LCFF calculations is the in lieu taxes weren't coming into the summary. So there's like 10 different tabs in our LCFF for each of the five I do. And the in lieu tab was calculating correctly and I was booking that, fine, no problem. But the negative in lieu wasn't coming over into the summary. And so I finally reached out on Wednesday to the, Tuesday or Wednesday to county office and said, why isn't it coming through for the elementary? High school is fine. And so Sarah Lampenfeld, who thank goodness for Sarah loves Sarah, she's great. She's like, send me the LCFF, let me take a look at it. So she called me back, she's like, okay, online 222 cell, whatever. It's missing a one. So sure enough, I go in, I find that cell and I put a one in and up, up comes the negatives for all the years, all the negative in lieu tax calculation. Okay, well, I showed Matthew this earlier today. The 18,330, 18,332,000 doesn't change. That's our LCFF entitlement. Okay, fine, looks fine, no worries. So on Saturday morning, I'm working on the multi-year and I couldn't figure out. I'm probably oversharing. But I'm trying to lead you to where I came to my phone call to Matthew. So I'm looking at it and I'm like, okay, well, the 18,332 doesn't change. But why aren't I balancing when I'm looking at the multi-year? Well, what happened is. Remember, because it was not taking it out of our local taxes, because that negative wasn't coming through, it had the effect of understating our state aid for the elementary. So when I went in to re-reconcile our components for the elementary district, our state aid had been understated by $4 million. And that's why our revenue had dropped. So that was the banker. And when we get into the spreadsheets, I'll show you. And that's why we had dropped so significantly and inaccurately. And so that's what I finally found on Saturday. So when we get into the spreadsheets, and that was the test, I wanted to see if you guys saw that on the spreadsheets.
You said for Live Oak that it was because Live Oak is an independent charter. I thought Pangrove was a dependent.
It is, but the in lieu taxes still, it still has, because we have to book all of Pangrove in its own fund.
Yeah.
So we had booked their state aid and their in lieu. And then we booked the elementary separately, their state aid and their in lieu. So even though the in lieu tax calculations is a net wash, it was still understating the elementary state aid.
And not Mary Collins, because Mary Collins is K8 and not only elementary.
High school district.
Okay.
So the high school calculations are totally separate. It's hard to explain when you don't actually do it. But literally, we have to balance all of these very separately between the LCFF. Yeah, and it really had to do with this one cell on line 222 that was missing a one. So we download these calculations, the templates from the FICMAT website. So whether in the downloaded hiccup or whether I bumped something, I mean, who knows why I didn't have this one? I don't know. So it's complicated. Okay, so that explains the variance. I just wanted to describe for you why it changed so dramatically. So. It was literally like a thousand pound gorilla. Because I knew there was something wrong and I just couldn't figure it out until Saturday morning, which is why I called Matthew and let him know. So this just kind of is my way of trying to explain it. The LCFF calculations, the state aid, in lieu tax calculations, Pangrove and Live Oak, the 2.8, 1.5 equals that 4.3. They reduce local property taxes and that they then increase state aid. And so that's, that's essentially what it is. And when I show you in the spreadsheet, you'll kind of see that. So moving forward, what is next? We have a 45-day window to revise the budget, align it with whatever the final state budget shows. There's an August 22nd board meeting that will have to be disclosed at that board meeting. Will need to, if they, like, let's say that last year the COLA changed, the COLA didn't change, but they did the augmentation. If something like that changed, they would have to redo the LCFF calculations, make any necessary categorical funding adjustments, if they're material in nature. Immaterial does not matter, material in nature. And then disclose any impact on the general fund. In these, there's all of these attachments within it. And then we're going to go over the comparative spreadsheet. So if you look at your binder, we're going to kind of spend a little bit of time there. I do want to touch on a little bit in my, in the, in the very first part, you'll see my narrative. The very last paragraph on the first page, we talk about our declining enrollment. This is a real issue. We've gone from 7,520 pre-pandemic, that's October of 2019. Right now, I'm projecting 7,212. That's an increase from where we were two weeks ago. That was like 7,203. So we've again, working real time with, that doesn't include the Kennelworth that I just mentioned. So that would be another increase, so we're inching our way up. We'll have to track very closely on those attendance factors. I'm assuming attendance factors of 93, 94, 95%, depending on the grade level. If those don't come in high enough, if our attendance is not rebounding, that can be problematic. If it's coming in higher, that would be a good thing. Again, I talk about, all of those attendance factors are by charter, by district. So they'll have to be monitored for each one of those. We, if you look at the second paragraph on the next page and the next three or four or five paragraphs, I talk about a new issue for us. And this is something that during the closing process, the minimum classroom expense, we have never had this issue. It is a big issue for Pedaloma City Schools right now. In 2022, 23, as we did the adopted budget, we did not meet our minimum 55% for unified district classroom expense. Absolutely. So for every district, whether elementary, unified or secondary, you have a minimum amount of instructional classroom expense that you have to meet. And this goes across the total general fund. It's not just unrestricted, it's the combined unrestricted, restricted general fund. And it really looks at a whole lot of factors and there's except exemptions and that you can put into a column. We worked on this quite a bit on Saturday morning when we identified it as an issue. And as a district, I think that Pedaloma may have to ask for a waiver. Those are possible. You don't want to ask for one lightly. The penalties for this are, can be pretty dramatic. I think it's a combination of a lot of factors as I really did some time drilling down and thinking about it. I think the first is we're in declining enrollment. And so we talked about that. When you're in declining enrollment on the natural, you have fewer students, you have fewer teachers, you have fewer instructional staff. You cannot reduce your fixed cost fast enough. You still are paying PG&E for the same amount of buildings unless you're closing schools, which we're not at that point, clearly. So your staff, your staff are coming down, your fixed costs are the same. In addition to that, we were, we're in declining enrollment in a very high inflation environment and in particular in 2223. So we have eight, 9% inflation on all of our fixed costs. And so that's problematic. In addition to that, we're experiencing high increases in our PG&E through the roof. I mean, we just got Pedaloma High School's utility costs, the true-up from the solar came in in early June. We just got those invoices last week and they came in about 120,000 over budget. So what we would expect to see about 145,000, 150,000, came in at like 250,000. Crazy. But we had a very long, dark, cold winter. And that means no solar generation, right? Or limited solar generation. So we experienced $458,000 increases in property liability next year. That's 1.1 million going up to almost 1.6 billion. That's a significant increase. So when you're living in an environment of these very, very large increases on the non-instructional side of the house and you're living in a declining enrollment on the instructional side of the house, that's problematic when you're trying to meet your minimum classroom expense.
So. This is the first that I read of it. Is that a legal, is that a statutory?
It's an ed code.
It's an ed code. And what constitutes classroom expense? You know, can count towards that.
That's a great question. It is complicated. There are exemptions, but it's mostly, it boils down to teachers and instructional assistants or other types of staff. I was having a conversation with some of my colleagues and it really comes down to how we code things in SACS. And so, you know, in talking to Ormedes, I think that I will be advising and am restraining to advise people on how we need to rethink how we're coding things for certain. So like a teacher on special assignment, do you code them as, do you use a function 2140 for professional development? Or do you use an instructional function? It already excludes, so one of the things that we trial ballooned on Saturday is the ELOP program, right? The Extended Learning Opportunities Program. So I thought, okay, we are coding ELOP incorrectly. We should code it as instructional because we were coding it like childcare, right? That's really not childcare, it's really truly now extended learning opportunities. But they're already excluding the 5,000s, which is your operational cost. So we contract out. So they're already excluding contracts, it didn't change anything. So it's complicated. It's got these weird formulas that it runs through. So it's not a simple calculation. So there are ways that you can try to go through and exclude things. And we did make some headway. So you think about educator effectiveness, we have a large educator effectiveness grant. So there may be ways that we can start rethinking, like if Tony is hiring subs in educator effectiveness, are the subs considered professional development? Or are the subs considered instructional? Because they're really in the classroom. We've always coded them as professional development, but I would argue they're instructional because they're in the classroom. See how that's a fine? So these are some of the things that a savvy CBO will be looking at. And that's how I would be advising. But of course. And that's the problem, which goes on to my third and fourth points. So as you go into an environment where you have a lot of categorical funding that's supporting things like mental health, that is not instructional in nature, in a declining enrollment environment, that also becomes problematic. We've got all of these big grants, whether it is community schools grant. No. And then in addition to that, in 2022, 23, which is where we have the most significant issue. I mean, we're off by like $4 million. I believe it's in large part because we had so many vacancies in the instructional area, in particular, special education. We had teachers leaving mid-year that we could not backfill. We had instructional assistants leaving mid-year that we could not backfill. So when we went through and took down a lot of those budgets, I believe that's what threw us into a lot of the challenges that we had. The good news is we took those budgets down and we were, we were able to identify it in the adopted budget rather than in the closing process. If we had not taken those budgets down, it might not have been as apparent to us. At this point, it would have become more apparent during unaudited actuals. But because we took a lot of those budgets down in order to address some of the budget challenges that we were foreseeing, we really did more of a, because normally I don't, I don't take vacancies down. I leave them there because I like seeing the variances. But because we were so concerned about our budget, we took a lot of those vacancies down while we were budgeting the retros that we had. And so that really shed a light on this whole issue about the minimum classroom expense. And so that's something that I actually think for 2223, a waiver may be the only way. We may have to go down that path. But that is a significant issue. We're off by about 1% for 2324. And that may be addressed through the budgeting process, but 2223 is a more significant issue. And I think it really is a combination of all of these things.
And tell us a little bit about the consequences if we don't.
That's something we're exploring. I've, I've never found myself in this boat. I've always been able, it's only happened to me like once or twice in my 27, 26 years. And usually I've been able to SACS my way out of it by changing codes and tweaking stuff. But I've never seen it so significant as 2223. And I really think it, it is this environment that we're living in. It's, you know, it's the, it's, it's just all of these factors that we're seeing. So. It's something to be aware of and something that I think the consultants will have to really kind of assist the district with. So I've been having some pre-conversations with them on how to kind of look at it. We'll be looking at and talking to the county office about a waiver and how that process works. There are financial penalties potentially if you can't. But I understand that there are waivers that are, are, you know, and I, and I think that the situation given is, is certainly, I think that, you know, that, that's a real possibility. So we'll have more information. I'll, I'll see if I can reach out tomorrow and try to get some more information by Thursday. But that's, I wanted to shed some light on that. So. Okay. And then. We talked about the revenues, the state aid, some other changes under expenditures. We talked about the major change in property and liability at 458,000. You know, a couple of other changes I highlighted. Under the narrative and assumptions, I've included that here. These are detailed narrative assumptions that the county office really will use as they evaluate our budget. I'm not going to go through the people in the audience, we've got, no, I'm not going to go through that in detail. There is, at the very back of that tab, the. The reserve, the minimum reserves for economic uncertainty, again, we're below our 10%, but we still have to disclose because we're over the 3% state requirement. So we disclose what that is. Let's spend a little bit of time under the comparative spreadsheet so I can disclose kind of the variances that you're going to see here between the preliminary budget. And this is really showing you our final budget revision number four as compared to the budget revision we took back. There are a couple of variances, they're not significant. I don't even provide a variance column, but we are, we are bringing back a little bit of change, not a lot. I've bolded that, you'll see under column B, other state revenues. Under, you'll see that go from 24 to 380. That's because I was able to download the. The pupil transportation reimbursement. So that's indicative of that. So just for you to know, that's what that is, that's probably the most significant variance. And then looking at the adoptive versus the preliminary, you can see where the state aid has changed. But you can see where the transfers to other charter schools has not changed very dramatically. And that negative is representative of Live Oak. That's the amount we transfer out to Live Oak. Okay? And the other changes, the net, other than, you know, the other changes are just kind of changing between the charters as we're reconciling, that's those minor changes in ADA that we're making as we were tweaking their enrollment and tweaking their ADA. It changes stuff a little bit here and there between them. And so that's what that is all about. And then there was a minor correction under 8792. And then if you look at the next page, we actually had a vacancy under one of the custodial floaters. So we decided to go ahead and close one of those vacancies. We have eight floaters. When I first got here, we had zero. So we're just kind of backing down some of the floater positions since COVID is now hopefully in the rearview mirror, we felt like we could go ahead and do that. The other changes under the 3,000s, we have to take all of our six funds because SACS does not, in the budget development system, does not collapse our fund into one. So I have to use spreadsheets to actually take all of our six funds and then summarize them into the spreadsheet. And so one of the, one of the 3,000 accounts got up by slightly. So you can see it literally moves between the objects. So that's just a correction between objects. And then we also took down some materials and some supply software. And then you can see the insurance actually going up by the 287. And then you can see the insurance actually going up by the 287. The 458 was inclusive of the 170 we had brought at preliminary and then the 287 it went up. And then the net increase overall, and you can see the change in the 2% and the 5% just because we've changed the total expenditures. And then if you go to the restricted side, you'll see the changes are primarily based on us taking that 2.2 million or that $2 million out of the learning recover, the yeah, the learning recovery. When we pull that 32% out, we had to pull it then also out of expenditure. We had pulled it out of the expenditure side. Mostly out of materials and supplies, but there was a little bit that we also pulled out of benefits, et cetera. And so at the bottom, you'll see that 2.82. And then a little bit out of indirect because part of that had been in the indirect cost column. Okay? Tony and I also spent some time, I know his is next, so I'm going to segue it a little bit for him. We also spent time on Saturday going through the LCAP and kind of summarizing what we have in the budget as compared to the LCAP to make sure that we're budgeting and accounting for the dollars that then are also included in the local control and accountability plan to reconcile between the two. So that's also included because we have to express in dollars and cents what they're expressing programmatically in the local control accountability plan. And then just to kind of orient you to what else is in here, and this is just public hearing, but the budget certifications are in here. The general fund, of course, and these very, very user-friendly state reports are in here. And then the other funds are all in here too. They're all projected to be positive. And then there's a lot of supplemental information in here. The CEA form is on page, if you look under supplemental information. It's on page, it starts on page 105. And the CEB 105, 106, 107, 108. This is where it shows that 55%. So 105 and 106 is based on the projected estimates for 22, 23. And this is where it shows the dollars and the percentages. And then the next one is the CEB, which is based on the 23, 24 budget. So when we're referring to that word, that's what we're referring to, those calculations.
And you know, it says, so we're, the 55 is for unified.
And that's what we're treated as. Because we're combined as a K8 and I mean, as a K6 and a 712. But because we report as a, as a combined.
But not power for the classroom because the power goes into the classroom. So that's not instruction.
They literally, they literally. They, they, they use the Saks, the standardized account code structure and they look at a function of a 1,000 or instructional function to make those determinations, just like when they're determining our pupil transportation reimbursement, they look at a pupil. That's why they went to the standardized account code structure in the first place, 20, back in Y2K 2000, it's so that they could determine those things. And then lastly, if you look, the criteria and standards also is full of very interesting stimulating riveting, I would say, information if you have, if you have the desire to read the 27, 28 pages that are there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Where does it say that, or is this the, this isn't the place for the positive?
On the certification page? Oh, and I didn't point out the multi-projections I should. That's actually under supplemental information. I apologize. If you look under page. Yes, supplemental tab and it is, starts on page 91. Because I do want to point a couple of things out. I use the dartboard, I'm sorry, page 89. I use the dartboard for the Colas. We did project some growth. We projected an additional 24 TK kids because we're still implementing transitional kinder for next year. Just one more year and then flat after that for the elementary. And then we projected about 75 additional students each year for the nine, for the 712 because of all the development we're seeing. And then if you look at page 89, we also projected about $400,000 in additional salary under column C and E. Line BD. Other certificates salaries, I'm assuming about 4.4 more FTE because if we add 24 students of revenue, we have to add enough to E. And if we're assuming 75 more students, I'm assuming 3.4 FTE. So I'm assuming I've put the costs in too, right? So if I'm assuming more revenue, we have to put the costs in to offset the teachers. So we put those in as well. We're assuming purse is going up, but flat stirs. And so I assumed about another $175,000 in purse cost each year. If you looked at the restricted, which is on page 91, we did assume some reductions in salaries in 24, 25 for COVID stepping it down a little bit. And this does, this does show that we do maintain a positive revenues over expense in the out years. But of course, we haven't built in any salary increases either in the budget year or the, the next two years. And then I do want to just point out under the the narrative and assumptions, the second to the last page under the narrative and assumptions. I also included a summary for the 23, 24 positions supported by one-time funding. I, I had talked to Joanna to make sure that you guys had this because I want you to be prepared for how many positions next year theoretically go away.
And so this is the amount that is presently being funded, the 3,665.
Well, it's the, it's the 3.6 million plus the 669. So we have 3.665 in federal and state COVID funded positions. Plus there's 670,000 in learning recovery block positions because we couldn't, COVID wasn't enough to fund everything. And then what I further did is I said, okay, there's 6.5 billion left in COVID recovery. Minus the 2 million, that 2,082 matches what we had in our ending fund balance leaves 4.4 million left. And then that leaves another 91 million, 91,000, excuse me. So, you know, and that doesn't account for raises and so on and so forth. So you're going to have to start. And that doesn't, that assumes the state's not going to cut anything further. I didn't do anything with art music because there's a plan and I don't know about the plan. So I didn't touch that. I didn't even speak to that. I'm not commenting on what there is, isn't. But I didn't factor any of that in here. I'm just talking about COVID versus learning recovery versus positions that are here. And, and just, I just want to remind us that these are all soft funded positions. Theoretically, in a year, they should be starting to pare back. And definitely in two years, they go away unless there's other money identified. So I want us to start preparing ourselves because, you know, we, we have come to depend on these positions. And the, the funding is, is quickly, depending on how you look at it, going away unless the state comes out. And remember, the state has a deficit roughly $32 billion right now. Now I did hear that state, state revenues are tracking up a bit higher. They don't have them all because that, yes, because the tax deadline was extended for certain counties. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
But just remind me, Chris, the certification happens at the audit, not here, right?
The certification will happen on Thursday when you actually adopt the budget. This is just a public hearing. So I just wanted to present all of the relevant information and then you'll take action with a positive certification, hopefully on Thursday.
Any other questions for Chris? No, thank you very much. Let's move on to the 2023 Local Control Accountability Plan Annual Update.
Yes, so as you are.
Before we, do we need it? So this is a public hearing. Did we open? Okay.
So as you're aware, the Local Control Accountability Plan or the LCAP is a spending plan that accompanies the district's budget. It's a three-year plan that describes the goals, actions, services and expenditures to support positive student outcomes that address state and local priorities. We are wrapping up our second year of our three-year LCAP. Next year will be our third year and also the beginning of building the next three-year plan. The LCAP committee met six times this year, starting in November, where we reflected on, on CAS data. In December, we, we heard from various committees as well as looked at other data such as our youth truth data. In February, we heard from our parents, students and staff panel. And in March, we reflected on that as well as looked at our new youth truth data. And in May, we resumed our reviewing our CAS California dashboard data and discussed our qualification for differentiated assistance with special education. Which requires us to develop a new goal for that. As you'll see in our, in our LCAP fiscal that addresses what we're required under differentiated assistance. And in our last meeting, May 24th, we looked at our actions, made, proposed some new actions, made some comments and questions that we addressed to our committee as well. So overall, I think the process went really well. We, we, we definitely, you know, I think grew a lot in regards to how we engaged our community partners. And I think next year, we, we will continue to, to strive to engage our community partners even more so, including more parents and more community partners to, to, to be a part of this process because it really should be a community process, a local control. And hearing from various voices to help support our plan will be a critical part for next year. Again, this, the purpose of this public hearing is to, to continue to elicit community input and recommendations and comments in regards to our LCAP. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions. And I do just want to thank our committee, Lindsay Moon, who's here. Dave Frashera, you know, the superintendent, everyone that was involved in, in, in being a part of our committee. It's truly a, a community effort, so.
I really appreciated the panels and I hope we continue to do that. That was a good information, some of it hard to hear, but I appreciated the panels. They were helpful.
I think one shift that Tony and I've talked about that I think is going to be important is collapsing the LCAP and all the charters and just putting it all in one LCAP because and I've struggled with this since I got here seven years ago, trying to reconcile a budget that has everything to an LCAP that only has the two districts. And Lindsay knows because we used to meet with Lindsay on the county office and try to explain why the budget says this, but the LCAP says that is crazy. So I think, I think that's the goal for next year and I would completely support that goal because trying to say, I, I mean, it's just really, really challenging to try to explain the variance between here's the spreadsheets for the budget and this is the total amount of our budget, but the LCAP excludes these three charters. It's just really, really challenging.
Hey, you know, we've looked at that.
But I think, I, I think that if, if the local community, because it really is, dare I say, local control. And I think if the local community is behind it, which I, I think that SCO would be behind it because there, it's as challenging for them to try to review it. And because we're under this obscure law that allows us to have one budget and we have these three internal charter, charters, I mean, I just, because it's really, really challenging. I mean, we, again, we've sat down grappling with how do you articulate our total revenue or our total expenditure is when these three charters are part of us and yet their LCAPs are separate. It's really challenging, so.
I just want to thank you, Tony and Lindsay and Matthew and Esmeralda. And, oh, Babs. Hopefully I didn't leave anybody out and all the people that the teachers and the staff and admin that were on it. I've been on LCAP since I started on the board and I used to kind of wonder, I don't understand how this relates to the budget or how it really relates to what's happening in our classrooms. So, and this year it was, you know, I mean, it was focused and we had these really great meetings and I was trying to figure out how all of this information was going to come into this LCAP. And you really, you really did it. I mean, I was reading it going, oh, I remember that. I remember that. And, and so I thank you for that because it really, it really, it's readable, it's focused. I can see what we talked about in the committees and the meetings and and how it's being used. I, I think my one comment is that I hope that in the future, when we're looking at the goals for our academic performance in our subgroups is that we really challenge ourselves to set those goals. So that the, we really look at achievement in getting them at least past median. And not just what's doable, but what's really needed in order to really transform that whole process. So that would be my only, I mean, just a little, just a little thing.
And just, just to add on that, Matty, when we start thinking about next year and district goals and LCAP, one of the things that we, we're going to have to add is something around special, special education. So we know that that's coming up. Yeah. So that'll be something that we're, we are working on for next year. And just also want to, you know, thank Chris for the, this, the budget thing that Tony, I think we start to see the LCAP and budget. You know, sort of the vision from the very beginning is how do we get budget advisory, LCAP to join forces as much as possible. Clearly they're two distinct committees, but you say, show me your budget, I'll tell you your priorities. We have to make sure that the LCAP and the budget are, are tightly aligned, which is where we're, I see that, you know, happening more and more, so.
There are no other questions for Tony. I will close the public hearing. So fun. So now we'll move on to special recognitions, reports and presentations. And I think we're starting with Jason, the introduction of the new chief business official. Oh, and he ran away. This always happens.
Step out for a second. So I'm going to take over for him. Get back to my old role. So at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Amanda Bonavert to come on up. So we're, we are pleased to announce the assignment of Amanda Bonavert as the new chief business official for Pedaling City Schools. Amanda will assume her duties on July 17th, 2023. Amanda comes to Pedaling City Schools from Burling, from the Burlingame School District, where she has served as chief business official for the past two years. Before that position, she worked as a CBO in Mount Shasta Unified School District and Weed Union School District for five years. Amanda also spent two years working in human resources and payroll, a year as a school secretary and two years as a long-term substitute teacher. Amanda grew up in Ventura County, lived in Wyoming, Utah and Arizona before returning to California. She and her husband Dustin have two grown children, all of whom live in Northern California. Daughter Marissa is an equine trainer in Ferndale, California. And their son Joshua currently studies astrophysics and physics at UC Berkeley. Amanda received her Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration from Northern Arizona University and her Master of Education in School Business Leadership from Wilkes University. She also has her Chief Business Official Certification. She also has her Chief Business Official certification and completed the Coalition for Adequate School Housing, the CASH Leadership Academy. Amanda has strong experience writing grants and securing funding for projects and initiatives. She has also served on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club, High School Boosters Club, PTA, and San Mateo County Schools Insurance Group, their version of RESIC, gaining insight into nonprofit governance and strategic decision-making. On a personal note, Amanda has enjoyed working with students as a cross-country and track field coach. In thinking about her transition to PCS, Amanda looks forward to collaborating with our dedicated team of educators, staff, and community members, and building strong relationships with educational partners to foster a positive and inclusive learning environment. Please join us in welcoming Amanda Bonavert to Peddling City Schools as the new chief business official.
Thank you so much. I look forward to starting to work with everyone on July 17. This was a perfect night for me to come to hear the budget. So thank you, Chris, for that.
Okay, I'd also like to invite Dr. Jose Quintana to come up. We are pleased to welcome Dr. Jose Quintana to Peddling City Schools as the new Director of Budget and Accounting. Jose will assume his duties on July 17, 2023 as well. Dr. Jose Quintana has a strong financial background in K-12 school district bond financing, including overseeing $2 billion in annual budgets. Dr. Quintana is married to Erica, and they have four children and three beautiful grandchildren. He has served in the US Navy as a yeoman, and then a cryptologist, and is a combat veteran with six tours in the Middle East. Dr. Quintana earned his bachelor's degree in family counseling from CRC Education Institute, and his master's degree in executive business management from Pepperdine University in Malibu, California. He earned his doctorate degree in counseling from CRC Seminary in Pasadena, California, and his Chief Business Officer Certification from USC's Rossier School of Education in Los Angeles, California. Jose has 25 years of experience in bond finance management and was appointed as capital fiscal manager at San Mateo Union Union High School District. Before that, he served as senior project manager at Desert Sands Unified School District and as construction bond manager for LAUSD. Dr. Quintana is excited to serve with Peddling City Schools because of its rich educational culture, and he looks forward to bringing his skill set to a diverse district and supporting equity and student achievement. Helping the organization achieve district goals is a high priority for him, and this new position opens the opportunity to help build one success story at a time. Jose's goal for the position focused on supporting the fiscal team and achieving their district goals and core values. By focusing on core values, Jose believes the department will address student and staff priorities that will enrich our community partnership at Peddling City Schools. Please join us in welcoming Dr. Jose Quintana to Peddling City Schools as the new Director of Budget and Accounting.
Thank you all very much.
So wel- welcome, Amanda and Jose, and and families. We're excited to have you as part of the PCS family.
Well, next up is our parcel tax presentation, so I would beg you all to stay and see see that presentation if you can.
So we're inviting Charles Heath. Charles Heath is coming to us from, tell me, the the organization.
Team Civics.
Team Civics.
Yeah.
To do a quick presentation with us.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Charles. Charles and I have worked together for more years than we probably, well, that I want to admit to, and through various organizations and school districts. So I'm thrilled to have him here tonight. We've been talking about renewing, I should say renewing, looking at a parcel tax. And he's, we started having this conversation about five years ago, and we've invited him to come back so we could start the conversation again and looking at the possibility of what would it look like for us to go back out for a parcel tax. And so he's come here tonight to kind of present options for the board to consider and what next steps might look like. So, Charles.
Okay, thank you. Can we pull my presentation up a chance?
Do you have it? You should have it. Don, I could go pull it up on computer.
I think so. This one right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just see that revenue measure planning team. Yeah, should the cover slides look like that? Is it 12 slides? Something like that. Sounds right. So Dave, I just forwarded to you. Okay, just send it to you again. So while we're waiting for that to come up, I'll just provide a brief introduction. I don't dance, so this is the best I can do in terms of entertainment. So again, I'm Charles Heath. I'm a partner with the firm Team Civics. We are strategy and communications consultants that work with school districts and other public agencies to help plan and prepare revenue measures for the ballot. So, you know, in terms of generating supplemental funding for school districts, you have a few options. You can go lobby Sacramento, and we know where you get with that. You can go try to raise money from your community through donations. We also know that there's pretty severe limitations on that. Or you can go to your voters, and if two-thirds of them are willing to support a local parcel tax measure, that's sort of the most tried and true approach for achieving locally controlled funding for school districts. So what I'll be, and and just by way of background, I've worked with your district in the past. In 2007, I was the consultant on the existing parcel taxes that you have that have no sunset date, and fortunately will go on in perpetuity. And then I also worked with the district in 2014 on your two bond measures. So and as Chris alluded to, in 2019, we started a process of evaluating the feasibility of a potential supplemental parcel tax at that time. We all know what happened in February, March of 2020, and so those plans were sidelined, because there were a few distractions during that time period. So we're now coming back and revisiting it. But part of my presentation here tonight is I have some of the data that we did glean. We conducted a survey of your voters back in 2019. So as a starting point, we can look at that and, you know, helps inform how we might move forward this time. Although we all, I have to qualify that, that that is pre-pandemic polling from 2019, and the world has changed pretty significantly since then. And I can talk a little bit about the types of changes we've seen since then.
And they're working on pulling it up right now. It should be up in a second. And you talked to you talked to them about the fact that we have one in perpetuity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, as everyone knows, the let's see, the the elementary district has a $75 per parcel tax that, you know, you you have the option of placing a sunset date on a parcel tax, but it's not required. You can pass them basically so that they continue in perpetuity, which you're one of the few districts that's fortunate enough to have an ongoing funding source like that. And then the high school district has a $50 per parcel tax. The challenge is is that your existing measures are fixed rate. They don't have a cost of living adjustment built in. So every year since 2007, they've been losing purchasing power, and so you can't pay for the same teachers and programs that you could back in 2007. Typically, what Thinking behind that in 2007? I think it largely was just based on, you know, what we thought the voters would approve. And typically, you can be aggressive on some fronts, but not all fronts. And so asking for, you know, that tax rate plus in perpetuity, you know, a cost of living adjustment on top of that.
And I can I can actually answer that, because I was just at a parcel tax committee with Alice, who was on the, she was actually part of the parents who helped get the original parcel tax passed in 2002. And then in 2007, I think. And so they they we they couldn't do it. They had to. It was one or the other, and they went with the in perpetuity first, because they couldn't do both. And they felt like the in perpetuity was more important at the time, which I I appreciate. So.
Yeah, I mean, most school districts have parcel taxes that have maybe a six or eight-year duration. So, you know, every four or five years, you're kind of back to the drawing board. We have to budget, assuming we don't have that revenue, you know, potential cuts. So, you know, in when we have districts that are successful like you in securing and in perpetuity parcel tax, typically, you know, you don't want to go back to the voters and mess with that, right? Leave that locked in, let it stay there. If you need supplemental funding, have that be a separate measure that stands on its own. Okay. So I will jump in here. Got some formatting issues, but we will make do. So I I've summarized this. We're strategy and communications consultants. So basically, what that means is we help you, you know, one, assess the feasibility of what you might put on the ballot. Parcel taxes require two-thirds vote, so the passage threshold is quite challenging. We help you determine how you put together a measure that stands the best chance of reaching that two-thirds threshold. What's your best election date? What's the tax rate? What are the funding priorities that would be part of that measure? Then we help you develop that measure for the ballot, write it, qualify for the ballot, and then also implement a communications program to help the community understand what it is that you're proposing to do. This is just a summary of our experience here in Petaluma with the two parcel taxes and the two bond measures. And then again, in 2019, we conducted that feasibility study for a parcel tax that ultimately did not go forward. And this slide, we can't read really, but what is, sorry for the technical difficulties this evening. This is so what this slide is trying to show is the passage rate for parcel taxes around the state. I I will summarize it generally that typically parcel taxes, the number of parcel taxes on the ballot in any election between 70 and 100% of them pass. So when you put these things together properly, and you go through a thorough process to tell the story about your need to the community, they do pass despite that two-thirds threshold. We had one outlier election, which was the March 2020 election, where only 50% of the parcel taxes on the ballot passed. In retrospect, that was the COVID election, where everyone was very unsettled going into the election day. And when voters are uncertain, they tend to vote no, because that's sort of the safe, the safe bet. But interestingly, immediately after that March 2020 election, as soon as the November 2020 election, passage rates jumped right back up to the historic norm, and they've continued through last year's elections as well. So, you know, a pretty positive environment out there for parcel taxes. This is just some of the the basic sort of rules that govern parcel taxes. So first of all, like we talked about, it requires a two-thirds vote. That's kind of the primary limitation on what you can do. You got to get two-thirds of your community to say yes. The tax must be applied uniformly across all parcels. So your current parcel is just, you know, $75, whether you're a business or you're you're a single-family home. What you can't do is say, we're going to charge this much to residential properties and this much to to business properties. It has to be that uniform application. The rate can be adjusted when you go back to renew the parcel tax, you know, if you do have a duration on it. Or you can build a cost of living adjustment in as well. So that may be one of the options we want to look at this time. So you kind of dig yourselves out of that hole that you're in right now, where the funding isn't keeping pace with the cost of providing services. You can provide exemptions to senior citizens. So typically, that's homeowners over the age of 65, and also low-income people with disabilities, if they meet certain thresholds for federal benefits. And most school district parcel tax do offer those so that the funding, so that the measure is not a burden to those unfixed incomes. The funds can be used for any purpose. So whereas bond measures are limited to capital improvements, bond measures, you can fund anything, teachers, staff, programs, services, et cetera. And we talked about the duration. It can be temporary, or it can be until ended by voters or or permanent. That's up to you. And typically, the polling that we do on the front end of the process helps us understand what voters might support. Typically, parcel taxes also include accountability protection. So an independent citizens oversight committee, mandatory annual audits. They are not required, but typically, it's a good idea to include them, because it helps those skeptical taxpayers feel like they can support this. And also for parcel taxes, you're not limited to the regularly scheduled primary and general elections, like you are for bond measures. You can call special elections. You can do it at any time, and we'll talk about election dates here in a minute. One of the keys for a parcel tax is that you got to set the right tax rate, because that is front and center in the proposal. And so keeping it affordable or is perceived as affordable is is really critical. So this is a summary of some of the polling that was conducted in that 2019 feasibility study that we did. So because you have the two districts, we are testing with the voters two potential measures, one for the high school district, one for the elementary district. This slide summarizes the results of a potential parcel tax election in the high school district. The language in the yellow box on the right-hand side is a mocked-up ballot question that we proposed to voters. It describes the way some of the funds might be used in the high school district. We were testing here a $72 parcel tax that would layer on top of your existing $50 high school parcel tax would generate $1.7 million year annually, and we were looking at a duration of eight years in this measure. Those are all variables that could be changed as we look at this. And if you look at the the bars on the left-hand side, so May 2020 and November 2020, those are two different election scenarios we're looking at. So May 2020 would be a small turnout special election. November 2020 is the higher turnout presidential general election. So we're trying to look at how does voter participation correlate with support? And then you see initial test and final test. The initial test was at the beginning of the survey, when people, all they had heard was the ballot questions, sort of if you walked into a voting booth today and had to vote. And the final test is after we provided information, both pro and con, simulating a campaign. And you can see in the high school district, we started at about 64% support in that initial test, but then we got up to 67.7. So with information, we were able to get across the two-thirds mark. Again, 2019 pre-pandemic, we'll have to take a fresh look at all of this. We also then tested a fallback in the high school district, and we said, well, how about instead of 72, what if it was $48 per parcel? We're trying to get a sense here of how much tax rate sensitivity there is. In the prior slide, we were at 67.7. By dropping the tax rate by, you know, almost half, we only gain ourselves a couple percentage points. So we didn't really see a lot of tax rate sensitivity there, which is which is good news. That's not always the case. And then similarly, in the elementary school district, here we were testing similar measure, but in the elementary district, a $96 parcel tax rate would generate $1 million a year again for eight years. We started at 61%, and after the pro and con, we really didn't move. We stayed right around 60%. And the numbers were pretty consistent across those two different election environments we looked at. So so more work needs to be done to figure out sort of how we crack the nut in the elementary district, maybe looking at a wider range of tax rates and some other strategies. It's also important to note that if you live in the elementary district here, you pay two taxes, right? You pay the elementary district and the high school tax. And typically, the way the ballot is structured, the bigger jurisdiction comes first, and then the smaller jurisdiction. So the elementary, we're hearing about a second tax, right? And I think that's probably a major factor limiting support. So again, that's just kind of a strategic issue we need to. You know, seven, what was, do you recall what the passage rate on the elementary district compared to the secondary? It was, it was, they were very similar. I do have that here. The high school district was 75.9, and the elementary district was 75.5. So within, you know. Few centuries. Saying yes, yes. Yeah. And and when you run to the camp. Yeah. When you run the campaign for these measures, for two measures, you're running it as a yes on A and B, because you want to get consistent yes votes, not people splitting their votes. Okay. Yeah. And then we, in the elementary district, we also asked this fallback. So instead of $96, what about 72? Again, we see a couple of percentage points difference, but it's not really a game changer. So anyway, that's what we know from 2019 that helps inform how we go forward. Do you have a question?
No, I just would have thought it would be the opposite, that people would care more about the little kids. I don't I don't know. It just blows my mind.
There's a lot of factors involved, but I think the second of two taxes issue is really.
Yeah, voter fatigue and all that, you know.
Are declining enrollment possibly from 2007 and and 2019.
But I but back then, we weren't in declining enrollment. I think the declining enrollment we could actually, no, because that was 2019. We were still.
In the elementary. Okay.
We pretty much have all second.
We pretty much have all secondary students in public schools, whereas it's not the same for elementary. So that might have made up the difference. I don't know.
It's also a broader cross section of Petaluma, so, you know, the elementary is very much, you know what I mean? Well, West Side and it also is socioe- socioeconomically a little different too than the broader community. So it's just interesting. The makeup, the makeup would be different.
And, and as we do updated polling, we can dig into all these issues. We can ask voters, you know, if you're voting no, why are you voting no? And then, you know, you know how you work around those challenges. So, okay, so that's it for the twenty nineteen, uh, data that we have looking ahead at upcoming election dates. You have, as I mentioned, you, you can put these on special election ballots really anytime. They're, you know, practical, or technically speaking, there's one election date left in twenty twenty three when you could put this on the ballot. That's in this November, but the deadline to be on that ballot is August eleventh. I don't think we're going to be ready. So practically speaking, we're looking at the twenty twenty four elections. The special elections, you should be aware, um, they're more expensive to conduct, right? The district has to pay the county for the cost of conducting the election, and if you're not sharing that cost with other jurisdictions, it's more expensive. So the March fifth statewide primary, that's a regularly scheduled election. It'll be less expensive. You'll also have higher voter turnout, uh, and then obviously the November fifth presidential general election. That dotted line that you see there between the May and August, um, items, those, that, that line represents the deadline by which you have to have voter approval for a parcel tax in order to get on the next fiscal year's property tax bills. So all of the dates above that dotted line, you would qualify for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. That's when the district would start receiving money. Below that line, you're not on the, you're not, um, receiving money until the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. Okay.
So I know, or, or what I learned and what I've seen running for office is in primary elections, it's older, whiter voters. Is there a benefit to that, or is that a negative, or does that not matter when it comes to a parcel tax?
Well, if you go back and, and look here, so we were looking at a very narrow, small turnout special election universe, which you're, you're accurately describing kind of the demographic profile versus a presidential general election, which is the high watermark for all turnout. And you can see that the, the, the support levels are pretty similar. And sometimes we see that, and, uh, you know, the good news there is it means you have flexibility. You can choose the election date that works best for you, um, rather, I mean, sometimes, you know, districts have to be on the high turnout ballot, or else they just don't stand a chance. We'll do the same sort of analysis this time and see if we're seeing similar results and make an election date recommendation accordingly. So those are your available election dates, and yeah, the, the dates in parentheses are the qualification deadlines. That's eighty eight day priors, prior, eighty eight days prior to election day. That's the deadline to deliver all your paperwork to the county to qualify for the ballot. Uh, so in terms of the planning process, um, the way we like to start is just like what we did in twenty nineteen is to conduct a feasibility assessment. Part of that is to understand what are the district's current needs? What is it that you're trying to fund? Ballpark what's your rev- revenue objective? Based on that, we developed some scenarios that we want to test in polling. And we go out and conduct that poll among your voters. We get statistically reliable data as to what we think they might support. And based on that, we bring back some recommendations, including, you know, election date, tax rate, duration, cost of living adjustment, all those various factors that, that we consider. If we come in out of that process, the green light, we think we have a viable proposal. The next step is that awareness building process where we're going to go talk to the community about the funding needs that you have. You know, a proposed parcel tax, what that would mean for education in the community. The district can't advocate for the passage of a parcel tax or any other ballot measure for that matter. But you can educate and inform the public with impartial information. So typically we do that from the district as we're preparing the measure for the ballot. Bring that back to the board, you adopt that measure, that's what qualifies you for the ballot. And then we move into that last step of the process, which is the independent advocacy campaign. And that's the piece where the district has to step back, because no public resources, including staff time, district dollars can be used to advocate for the measure. So at that point, we're forming an independent advocacy committee, raising private dollars, recruiting volunteers to run the campaign in favor of the parcel tax.
And can trustees, because technically we're employees, not, or technically we're something, no. Okay.
So.
If we get money from the, we get our four hundred dollar a year stipend.
No, you, no, I don't think so. No, you're not, you're not considered employees of the district, and everywhere I've ever worked, board members are essential parts of participating on.
That's what I would imagine. I can't fathom.
So yes, you, you might get a stipend because you participate on a board and you are eligible to get health benefits, but you're not considered an employee of the district, just to clarify.
Yeah. No one can argue that four hundred dollars is full time employment, right? So, you know, the superintendent and CBO and principals and teachers, right? During their workday with, they're being compensated by the district, they can't be active in a, in a campaign like this. However, after hours on their own time, they absolutely can be involved, because that's your personal time, and you have the same rights as any other citizen. Trustees, you don't have the same time limitations. So you don't have sort of a, a workday. The, the fundamental rule is we can never use a district resource for the campaign. So we can't use facilities like this. We can't use district computers. We can't use district money. So as long as, you know, if your time is not associated with district compensation and you're not using a district resource, then it's fair game.
So literally I would take a lunch break, go out in my car, on my cell phone, and make phone calls. I mean, because you can do that on my personal cell phone, and I would never use my computer at work. And as a trustee or, you know, you can do that, but you cannot use a district piece of equipment and you can't use facilities. So we would meet at a board member's house, and we would have committees after hours, I mean, meetings, whatever.
Okay, but that's, I mean, that, that's a ways down the line, right? Where we gotta go through the feasibility process, the whole district planning effort before we get to the campaign. And at that point, we'll help organize that group that can take the process forward.
So the district can pay for its steps one, two, and three essentially, but not four.
Exactly. Yep.
Right.
Yeah, there's basically a line, once the board adopts that resolution calling for the election, that's the point at which no more district resources.
And how long does the feasibility piece take? Like, how soon would we have to start that?
Yeah, the, the feasibility study is probably three months maximum. And then we'd be back in front of you with some numbers and some recommendations. Um, and then based on which election we're targeting, that kind of drives the timeline from there. Yep. So in our discussions, I also know that at some point in the future, the district also needs to contemplate a bond to kind of refresh your funding for facility upgrades. Bond measures are limited only to the primary and general elections in the even numbered years, so you have a little more limitations. So one of the factors we might consider in how we time our parcel taxes, how that might influence when a bond measure could go on the ballot. So March and November of twenty twenty four are your next opportunities. So for example, if we did a parcel tax in March, that probably leaves a door open for doing the bond in November, if that seems feasible. But beyond that, twenty twenty six would be your next opportunities to do a, a bond measure.
And I would strongly recommend that if the district wants to go down the process of looking at a bond, which I think we need as a community, um, that we do a master planning process so that we're not doing back of the napkin budgeting, um, and that we actually do a needs assessment, um, school by school and identify where the priorities are, what the needs are, and then come up with a realistic, um, cost estimate for what the needs assessment shows, and do a planning regarding the secondary district and the elementary district. So for what it's worth, I would recommend that.
So just quickly going back to these election dates, so I think, you know, March fifth of next year is probably the soonest we would go to the ballot. So if you see that deadline to qualify for that ballot is December eighth, so we would probably be looking at a November board meeting to put a measure on the ballot. So kind of backing up from there, you know, we really need to start the feasibility assessment here pretty soon, so that we leave ourselves some runway to do that outreach effort before we, we go to the ballot. So if we want to keep these election dates on the table, just need to get moving here pretty quickly. And that's what I have to share tonight, and happy to answer any questions y'all have.
So before, and maybe we just a little bit, little bit backwards. So I, I want to also share a little bit about the why, right? We talk about, we've, we've had conversations around bond, bond funding. We're getting very, very low. Elementary is very, almost gone. Secondary, there's a little bit left, but that's something that we're going to have to explore. And, um, but we also have this parcel tax. So back in, you know, oh five, right, similar timing, I don't know exactly the, I don't know if it's exact same timing, but Nevada also went out for a parcel tax. They've since gone back out to voters twice. So we are now let, we're receiving less than half, uh, that Nevada is receiving from the parcel tax uh, for a very similar sized district, similar, similar, very similar community. Measure, measure C and D, measure D, I'll talk to the elementary district. We talk about technology, reading specialists, bilingual resource teachers, uh, art, music. I mean, it's where we pay our music teachers. And in the last several years, we've been having to contribute from our unrestricted funds to help, uh, make contributions to the parcel tax, because it's not enough to fund teachers. We work with our, with our partners, um, Pedal, Pedal in the Federation of Teachers, CSEA. This is going to have to be a massive push by everyone to educate voters and that, hey, we, we talk about, uh, elementary teacher prep time. We talk about, um, how do we, how do we bolster what we're doing for students? Where can you get a new revenue stream? This, the parcel tax makes, it makes the most sense that we go out for parcel tax first. And then we look at bond for facilities. We have massive needs for bonds. But I think the, our most urgent need right now is parcel tax. And so that's why we brought Charles to come and talk about parcel tax first. And then secondarily, we can start exploring bonds. You do parcel tax and bonds together, that's a recipe for disaster, for a failure of both of them. So you have to do kind of one at a time, and parcel taxes, we can, it's so much more broad and open what we could, we could use for funding. So that makes the most sense for pedal in the city schools as a district and where our most acute needs are. And then we can start talking about bonds once we get through that.
Well, and just to add on top of that, we also are now this one to one device district, right? And part of what we also talked about is we need to identify an ongoing revenue stream. How do we continue funding our one to one device needs? And so we know we've been able to use some one time money in the past that we set aside. And we talked about that a couple meetings ago, in which we've been able to make that work between COVID hitting and needing one to one devices. But in the next X number of years, couple years, all of that money goes away. And then as Dave has pointed out, we need, um, a device replacement plan, long term. He's worked, he's done quite a bit of work on that, but we don't have a funding string. And the parcel tax, we know technology, at least my memory, last time we polled, technology is one of those things that polls relatively well when it comes to the parcel taxes. So.
Instead of taking it out unrestricted budget, we can use another funding stream.
Right, absolutely. And, and to your point, um, we actually had to take stuff that has been historically funded out of the parcel tax out. And, and there's a summary in my narrative toward the end before the multi-projection assumptions about what the parcel tax funds, and it is shrinking dramatically. And we met with the parcel tax committee, um, a couple nights ago last week. And the, the revenues have remained relatively flat this entire time. I mean, they are not going up at all. They're super, super flat, because even though we may be adding parcels, we're also getting senior exemptions at the same time. So to your point, we are getting squeezed. We're super grateful to the community. We want to make sure we send that message, because we have a very generous community. And costs are going up, so.
And so I think it's going to just be, it's going to be really important to get as many partners involved as possible. And when we create the narrative about what, what is the, what is the need? What's the why behind this? Why are we doing this? What's it going to fund so that we can kind of come to some agreement there? And then we're going to present it out to the community.
Would you, uh, since we have one in perpetuity right now, would you imagine that a proposal would be to replace it or to supplement?
Well, I, I think that we're looking to supplement your existing measure. So typically what we do in districts with an in perpetuity tax is we basically layer a new tax on top of it. And it can have similar terms, it can have different terms. That's what the feasibility assessment will help us understand. But since you have that existing funding locked in, I would recommend that you just leave that, let it, let it play out.
Any other questions about the parcel tax, please, below? Yeah.
Is this going to be available to us, this presentation? Can you make it available to us?
Sure thing, yeah.
That would be great, just to get those.
I know, it was hard to read.
Yeah, and the twenty nineteen information, it's really good.
Sure thing.
Oh, a quick one, Charles. What's the voting threshold for a bond measure?
Fifty five percent.
Fifty five, okay.
Fifty five, so, yeah.
It's not a tax.
But that's what puts us in the Prop thirty nine, which is when you have, you know, like the bond oversight committee. And so there are, it kicks you into certain requirements as well. They're all part of your local assessment. It's just, it's a different type of tax.
Well, bonds are a property tax too. So voters are authorizing you to issue bonds that are then repaid through a property tax that's assessed.
It's just.
There was a statewide initiative in two thousand that lowered the thresholds only for bonds, not for parcel taxes too.
But the, the repayment of bond is based on the value of your property, not the parcel. That's correct. So is there, uh, is there a, uh, and I, I heard you before that bonds can only be, be used for capital improvement, and whereas parcels, anything? But on the parcels, since it's based on the unit, uh, of a parcel, as opposed to the value of the property, is there any, um, you know, argument about what is the right kinds of things that a parcel should, should fund from an equity perspective, because every parcel's tax is the same, not based upon value? Is there any kind of, uh, yeah, uh, funding justice that is associated with the fact that it's based on the parcel, not on value?
Um, I, I, I haven't really seen parcel taxes looked at through that lens in particular, in terms of kind of taxpayer equity. I mean, typically what we do is we follow the community. Well, one, we follow what your needs are, right? That's why we're doing this, but also then what do the voters prioritize? And we tend to see, you know, attracting, retaining teachers, you know, keeping good teachers in the classroom, maintaining manageable class sizes, supporting programming, especially like STEM related programming tends to be very popular right now, including the technology that Chris mentioned. Those tend to be the types of priorities that are funded by a parcel tax.
And for us, it's library program polls very, very well.
Library, art, music.
Fine arts. I mean, our language is actually very broad. The language in our ballot measures were, was very broad, but it specifically calls out those programs, and we have aligned our program and what we fund very closely to what the ballot measure called out. Because it also comes down to, we want to be able to pass another one potentially in the future. And so we want to honor what our community supported. But the language itself is actually relatively broad when you read it.
So I know this is a, a presentation, it's not a vote of anything, but we're going to start moving down the path of, of looking at, doing some polling.
Future business.
Yeah, future business.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Now we're moving on to our last presentation of the night, the math annex presentation.
Thank you, yes. At the last board meeting, we mentioned we would continue to seek answers around our math common assessment provider. So I've invited Math Annex to be present as well as, um, asking Josh to expand upon his presentation from the last time. So I'll hand it off to Josh.
Excellent. Um, so Math Annex, Dr. Callahan is available via Zoom right now if questions come up for him. So I have a few things I want to say, just to kind of direct my presentation more around the math common assessments that I did last time. Um, and then, then answer some, um, are you available for questions at the end? Go ahead. Um, so, um, as you know, we implemented the math assessments, um, Math Annex assessment grades third through math three this last year. As we mentioned last time, and we all know it was a bit of a bumpy implementation, um, which you would expect during the first year of any new system. Um, I know the board has heard from some teachers in math departments expressing their concerns, and I'm here to ensure you that we are listening. The biggest area of concern is coming from the junior high and high schools. I believe this is really stemming from the level of support we provided or did not provide to those grade levels. Um, when thinking about common assessments and the reflection process, more importantly, the first thing I want to make sure is, is the process useful and actionable? And so in that, um, and we definitely supported grades third through six in that effort this year. Um, and I want to show some data based on that effort from the third through sixth grade. So after each time we met as a grade level meeting, I sent out a survey to all the teachers involved, third through sixth grade, and asked the question, it wasn't useful and actionable, not just the assessments, but the review process. Because once again, nothing's useful and actionable unless we do something with the data. Um, you'll notice that in October, we had about a seventy five percent, um, approval rating for it was useful and actionable. That only grew over time. It grew up to eighty five percent in January. And then by the time we did it in March, we had a hundred percent of the people in that session say, yes, it was useful and actionable. So I think that not only was it useful and actionable from the beginning, but, um, support for the process grew over time. I, I also want to highlight some of the things that people said on those surveys. As this, I think addresses some of the things that came up last time and in some other documentation. But I'm not going to read them all, but here's the bolded ones. The Math Annex platform was very user friendly and provided incredible, useful and detailed information. Now, these are all quotes from teachers who were in those sessions. Teachers use the time to connect, to connect their curriculum to the assessment and how to best use their curriculum to support student needs. I really appreciate the re-engagement protocol run through. So that was kind of the next steps, like, okay, now you've looked at the data, what do we do next? And so providing support around what to do next. They reviewing the data with my grade level partner. Teachers were becoming more comfortable with the platform and were able to manipulate the data more easily. And this is the one I really appreciated. We actually are getting into the data because I know that that's a space that, okay, we've had common assessments before, but when we actually get a chance to look at them. I also want to mention like, and I also want to say, I know that level of support was not there seven through 12. But I also want to talk a little bit why I'm excited to partner with Math Annex. And it's really twofold. First off, as you know, I worked at SCO for 14 years, the math coordinator there. And I watched many different iterations of common assessments across the county, across the state. As a matter of fact, I helped in an effort here in this district, in this room about 10 years ago, that kind of didn't go anywhere. Because a lot of time is spent on designing, negotiating, back and forth, what questions and, and how it's all going to work. And then we never get to that important part of actually implementing the assessments. And even if we do get them into students' hands, then the reflection and review process. Secondarily, if we want to ensure equity and access to a rigorous mathematics program, it's useful to have an outside expert, an outside partner that has expertise in this space. I don't, I don't know if you're aware of this, but Math Annex helped write the smarter balance assessment. They have a wealth of knowledge of what makes good assessments and how to assess the multi-dimensional nature of mathematics learning that we talked about last time. They also have human analysts that score the assessments because our assessments are open-ended and constructed response. So once again, this isn't just cheap and easy multiple choice. It provides a lot better registered data and they have analysts that help us with that. Another time saver on the teachers' end also. And having a third party who has knowledge of what is essential mathematics that students need to know to be college and career ready allows us to have a common set of high expectations for all students across the district. And in my opinion, during my long career as a math coordinator, there's no one else that offers what Math Annex offers in this space. Moving forward, we are making adjustments to address some of the concerns as I talked about last time. We have a plan to support the secondary teachers in the year coming up that is very much like the grade level meetings we had last time. Where we will be as a district, bringing the seven through 12 teachers together. We have also made adjustments where we're just giving two assessments this year. And that are a little bit longer, but this allows us to kind of not worry so much about the pacing that was some of the issue with last year. Because different sites have different pacing. And so not like we all have to be at exactly the same spot on February 13th. And Tony and I are working right now on setting up a time on August 11th to meet with each math department individually to listen as a listening session to listen to their concerns. And always the math committee plays a major role in providing feedback to the system. So that's where I'm at right now. So I'm open and Patrick, Dr. Callahan is available via Zoom as well. For questions, comments, yeah.
Did you have similar data on the feedback for the secondary?
No, as, no, I don't have, we, based on not supporting that well, I didn't have an opportunity to provide the survey for them. So no, that was an oversight on my part. But we plan on, that's one of the plans moving forward is to have a much bigger, nicer feedback loop with the secondary.
Maybe then, okay, so what I'm hearing is we blew it with implementation of the pilot for the secondary. And we're getting a lot of that feedback now. So what's going to be different? How, how can Math Annex be deployed in a way that is supportive at the secondary? And how do we make sure that that happens this year?
Right. So I'll let Patrick speak to a little bit of that here in a second. In the deployment, like getting the assessment into kids' hands. And I know, because I know that was some of the concern and that's a platform thing. But like, it's going to start with the listening sessions on August 11th. I will also say that the, after the first assessment, we will be working with Math Annex to develop and have them more involved in the data analysis part. So that when we come to the first grade level meeting, we will be ready with how to best support teachers in that space. And it will be a district-wide initiative versus being less left to, last year it was left to the sites to kind of run it on their own and without much support from our department. So we will be in the room, we will be facilitating versus.
And then maybe more to the point than, you know, okay, so we're going to do things differently that are going to be supportive at the secondary particular. But I want to hear, you know, backing up for a second. I want to hear how Math Annex has helped, you know, other districts close gaps in math on the math scores and also raise levels of grade, grade level standard achievement.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
You mind speaking to that, Patrick?
Yes, hello. Can people hear me? Perfect. Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here and answer questions. Yeah. So as Josh pointed out, we work with a lot of districts. And we build assessments that we think are really innovative in terms of providing valuable information about how students think that is directly actionable by teachers. Again, I would like to acknowledge that for the pilot, we spent a lot of time at the elementary level and we did not do much with the secondary level. So I completely understand why teachers don't quite see to the design and purpose and have very valid questions about this. In terms of our experience, we work with about 25 districts currently. We have a high school district that we work with in the Bay Area that we've done a five, a four-year study with, where they did an independent evaluation with Stanford University, where they showed that in a random controlled experiment, using our assessments to guide and inform instruction, we were able to change, well, the, the comparison group for the incoming ninth graders that would have been put in remedial classes. Three years later, at 11th grade, less than 1% in the traditional cohort had met grade level standards. Whereas in the treatment group that used Math Annex and other supports, 43% of those students that would have been slotted for remediation had met 11th grade A through G standards. And so this is probably the most rigorous testing, again externally by researchers at Stanford. And that paper is going to be published soon, but we can probably get you some data on that. We've also worked with large high school districts, high schools in San Diego, Orange County. And we've had, when we connect the assessment and really help support teachers to really see the value of looking at these open-ended responses, that's when we see the results. And that's what we hope to do differently this year. This is not what happened at the secondary level in Pedaluma.
How, those results that you shared with us from the study, were those findings robust across student groups? Ethnic student groups and, you know, English learners and all the, yes, disabilities fostered kids, those kinds of.
The student groups that were looked at were English learners, special ed and African-American students. And it was robust across those groups. And in a recent meeting, a board meeting, which is public in San Diego Unified, we actually looked at matched data of student performance in middle school, year-to-year data, and showed that of all groups, African-American students had really closed the gap significantly in one year. And this was the year right past COVID. So we have examples of this. And one of the things that I'd also say is that because the students can answer in any language they want, we provide Spanish translations, but students can answer the mathematics in any language they want. And we have analysts that are bilingual and have math teaching experience. We really think that that's the access that we want to provide. And so that students aren't being tested in mathematics for their language abilities, but rather their mathematical reasoning. And we don't want language to be an obstacle. So that is another service that we really support students, especially English learners.
Was Latinx students, one of the subgroups that were tested for the effect?
Yes.
And the results?
Positive, yeah.
Similar, similar, you know, I mean, you, you talked about a 1% to 43% rise in the, in the overall group on grade level standard achievement. What were they broken down into the African-American and Latinx groups?
So, the, I will, I do not have the exact numbers in front of me. I will say however, that this group that we did the randomized controlled study on were looking specifically at students that would have been put in the remedial or below grade level track. And instead were put into rigorous grade level courses with supports by having this sort of data to guide instruction coming from Math Annex. And so I can tell you that the cohort that would have traditionally been placed into the below grade level track was disproportionately Latinx, English learners, African-American. And so I apologize for not being able to answer exactly the, the percentages. But I can say that that really was the dominant demographics of the group we looked at overall for this study.
Well, we have had email responses from our secondary math departments and teachers. And I'm trying to wrap my head around kind of where to focus in trying to come to terms with the challenges that they had last year. And so I'm, I guess I'm, I'm along with, with Sheldon, I just want to have a little more specificity on how you're going to adapt the program. I mean, we heard that the program was outdated. They had problems with the data collection. They had problems. They said that the analysis was flawed and inaccurate. And so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the elementary school teacher seemed to you know, not have those experiences. So how do we do this? They're totally different environments. So I guess I want to know a little bit more about how Math Annex itself is going to adapt. If they're going to work with our teachers, are they going to work with our staff? And adapt this program to address the real challenges they seem to have. Other than, I mean, when you say we're going to support them, what does that mean?
So I'll, I'll speak to how we will support them from Ed Services and then I'll let Math Annex talk about their side. But specifically, so like I mentioned, we will give the first large assessment in the, during August. So that we can have that data back by September 20th, which is the first time that seven through 12th grade will come together. And that will be facilitated by myself, as well as I've also contacted with SCO and they have two math coordinators there that are willing to help us. So I've also brought more folks on board to help us out. When we did it with third through sixth grade, we would work with the principals and they, the principals each had a grade level they chose and to work with, and we'll have a similar structure here. And so it will be a more concerted, supported effort, working with our own folks to do the work as well as during the in-between, so that that happens. And then for sometime in the fall semester, we will meet with each site individually to go over a learning cycle where we look at their specific data and think about what are some things we can work on in their classroom. And I'll let Patrick talk about how Math Annex supports that. But we and Ed Services will meet with each site individually as well, not just on the four large meetings. So we'll do that once in this fall and once in the spring. And once again, I have some folks that are going to be helping me with that as well.
I have a question before.
Yeah.
So you're talking about training, but some of the issues were around the assessments themselves. Questions unclear and ambiguously phrased. I'm just reading from
Yeah.
Errors in assessment results, other platform errors, sending students to the wrong test, tests in the wrong language. So, you know, there's one thing about training teachers to use it, but then there's the other issue of they were just, the whole system wasn't working for them.
Yeah. And I'll let, and yeah, I wanted to, to talk about both things, both how we support them. And to be honest, it's easier to get over those bumps when I'm in the room and we can move through. So it wasn't as big of an issue. But at the same time, we shouldn't be having those issues. And so I'm, I'll let Math Annex talk to some of those more structural, the platform things.
Yeah, those issues were unfortunate. This was a pilot year. This is the first time we tested these. And the extent to the fact that we have now used this, we've now analyzed over a million student responses across our districts. We have done extensive quality control. As far as the technical glitches in terms of the platform not working, that was, I believe almost every one of those was addressed very quickly. And I do not believe will be an issue anymore. So the, so the, the technical platform is brand new. I think it will be fine. Again, it's worked fine for the elementary and for all the other districts we've been going through. And so we'll be extra supportive to make sure that that works. As far as the alignment of the questions not matching, that was something that we did an additional check. We ran a correlation study about the performance on these items and the smarter balance scores from your students paired. And we found that statistically speaking, the content that they were seeing on these items had a strong correlation with the smarter balance for your students paired with these questions. And we can share that analysis with you as well. Lastly, in terms of the questions being ambiguous or not worded in a clear way, the reality is that, as Josh pointed out, I work with smarter balance. A lot of the questions are word problems. A lot of the questions are open-ended. And so if students have not had experience with some of those types of questions, I can imagine that those would be confusing to those. But again, we stand behind the fact that the questions we believe are highly aligned. We continue to improve the questions. And with the secondary teachers, we will make sure that they have access to see all of the questions in advance and so that they can give us any input if there's anything that they still feel is not valid or useful.
Josh, could you just share a little bit? So it's, it seems to me we've, we should have been, we should have focused on elementary this year and then not even done secondary next year. And that's just an implementation problem. But my question is, so if secondary becomes the focus next year, elementary, then?
Right. No, that, that is a concern that I have. However, those learning cycles I spoke with, meeting with each department in, once in the fall and once in the spring, we're going to do the same thing with elementary. So we will have touch points at every site as well, which also allows us to be more focused on a site level and not at a grade level. So we can actually be a little bit more targeted in our support. We will also be supporting the principals in running and Math Annex support in running those data conversations that come out of the two larger assessments. And they went through it this year. So they're more familiar with the process and, and, yeah.
Yes, if I can add, I think there is some things that are unfamiliar. It's not just right, wrong. We show all the different. Um, it's not just right, wrong. We show all the different ways students approach this. And so I think there is a little bit of a learning curve. And uh in retrospect, I think what you just proposed, if we had done uh elementary last year and then secondary not do and then do that as the focus this year, that probably would have been better looking back. Um, so now that we're here, we've learned from that pilot. This elementary is in a good place and will continue to get uh support. Um, but the uh support that the secondary did not get last year will be available. Um, with some additional, like Josh said, we tried to do four assessments uh this year. Um, and it was difficult to align to the different high schools with the different pacing guides. So now we're doing a start of the year and a sort of the uh end year that are much more uh overarching. So it'll take uh less uh days away from instruction. It will solve the problem of some of the pacing issues which teachers um were rightly concerned about. So I think we nonetheless did learn a lot from the secondary pilot, and we're really in a position, I think, to uh set them up for uh success. And you know, we're excited about this, and so that it is coherent and aligned to the vision and elementary and secondary are in the same place.
Uh, Josh or Tony have, have either of you had personal uh prior experience with implementing math uh annex and to what success if you have?
Um, I worked with the school district several years ago and helped. And, and this was early in their iterations and we, that's when they had teachers score them. Um, and so, which is a valuable process, but yet doesn't get to the now what conversation? Um, so I have been working with um other districts who has implemented this. Um, those conversations were valuable because the thing that comes out of that is like, ooh, this is what kids are expected to do. And so that is a value added to teachers when they do analyze this work, because once again, that's the value of having a Math Annex third party provide the assessments, cause they, and especially ones who's familiar with smarter balanced. And so it really helped those teachers understand what the expectations were for the students.
So I don't have um experience with Math Annex, but I do in every district I've been in have implemented common assessments and um and uh like any system, there's always these little glitches and struggles and challenges that um that we faced even when I was a principal implementing common assessments. Um, so there are things um looking back. Um, you know, uh, from my department could provided more. Uh, and this really, you know, uh Josh is a, was a kind of a one man band trying to implement at sixteen different sites. And uh, and I know that was most uh can be challenging and overwhelming. And um, and I think, you know, pending, we don't have another FPM visit next year. Um, I can help provide more direct support for, for Josh in this as well, um, because it really is um, a, a part that shouldn't really be bigger than it really needs to be. Common assessments is just one small thing that we, we really should do. But if we don't do it right, or we don't make the effort of trying to make sure that that system is in place, it may become a bigger thing than we want it to be, because if it doesn't impact our, what, how our students are performing in CASP, then we move into situations where we may be under differentiated assistance again, and then it just becomes a more of a bigger focus than we really want it to be. We really want it to be about instruction. How do we inform our teachers to have um better information so they can change and, and adjust to the students' needs based on, you know, the cycles that we, we go through. Um, and so, you know, I think um, um, that will take some time, but uh, but as that shifts from a process to a culture, uh, I'm hoping that uh we'll start to see the, the benefits of it and, and minimize the amount of importance that we put on those common assessments. And really, and really put more importance on how we focus on, on instruction to make, to meet the needs of our students.
Any last questions?
Can you just outline this, the, the proposed sort of timeline? What is that gonna look like again for secondary for next year?
Sure. Um. Dave, can you put the slides up for a sec?
Because I, I guess the reason I'm asking is because I know we have, you know, CASA, we have, CASA and Petaluma, I have different curricula that they're, that they're using.
Right.
And so I think that also added to the
Right.
The pacing add to the, to the concern, I, I believe.
Yeah. Um, so this is what the, the new structure looks like. So la- last year it was four times and with that, it was like, you know, in October, you know, you want everybody that's in Math One to kind of be in the same place. And then we did it again in December and then in March, you know, and February and March. So right now, we're gonna give a large, what they call the DIMI, which is the District Essential Math Inventory in August and September. So that's like a screener. So that's every kid coming in, that there has no instruction has taken place, so that we don't have to worry about pacing at that point in time. The learning cycles are dependent on what happens that first time. So it's dependent by, by site, and a lot of times it's foundational things that may be from previous grade levels. So it will be either things that they have already covered or covered in previous grade level. So when we engage in that work, it will be tailored to that site. So we won't be as, you know, it might be one conversation with CASA, but a different conversation that very same week with Petaluma, depending on where they're at. Um, and then in January, February, we haven't decided. The math committee is trying to determine when we wanna give that second dipstick. Um, we, I put it there because that'll allow us to make adjustments before CASP. Whereas if we did it in May as an end of the year to show growth, there's, we can't really do a ton with that data. But yet, yet, once again, it's a dipstick, not have we covered what we've covered, it's um how are we doing on the things that we've measured first? And then we'll get into another uh learning cycle. So the whole system is a lot less dependent on what scope and sequence you're engaged with as a student or teacher. And that was based on the feedback from the math committee this year, that, that, that last.
And if, if I can just add, I would say that this is the structure we've used successfully with May.
Oh.
With May.
So we were
Other districts.
I, I shared this last time. We were a novelty in the four assessments that we had done before. Um, this, this structure here is what they use and I, I know, and most of the other districts they work with. And that's another reason why I'm also more confident in the questions and the assessments is because it isn't brand new.
Thank you for that. I, um, that's really helpful.
Right.
Um, and it brought up something um that's probably for you and Tony uh about the math committee itself and the makeup of the math committee. And so it seems like it's elementary school dominant. And so I'm just um asking how we can encourage our secondary math teachers um, so that it is really more collaborative and actually have more voices, because if they're approving these things and they're um uh evaluating these things, um, I wanna have as many voices on there as we can.
I, I, uh, and I don't, um, I hear you, and that may how this comes across. The survey and the work we did that I showed you before was from all the teachers. That was not of the committee. The committee is well-balanced in that all the math department chairs are on it. As a matter of fact, one school has two teachers. So it's, it's, it's balanced across the grade levels and sites. So every site has a representative and every grade level has a representative, whether it's elementary or secondary. So it's in balance. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And yeah, as a matter of fact, because of this pacing question, we actually had a meeting in which we had one teach from Math One and Math Two and Math Three from both sites come together, and it was a very secondary um heavy meeting because we had the secondary pacing issue. So we tried to really get it right by, okay, what can we test on that last two tests? Um, so, yeah. So a lot of that feedback was just from the, not the math committee, but from all the teachers. Um, and, but the committee is more well-balanced.
Uh, I apologize, I dropped out. Um, my laptop died. Uh, I just wanna, my last comment is, is that I really do uh look forward to working more closely. We did not work closely enough with secondary for various reasons of logistics. But um, I'm really committed. We're trying to innovate in math to create uh an assessment that first and foremost is useful for teachers and really impacts students' mathematical achievement. Um, we're proud of the quality of what we've done. We've used it a lot. We've had success. Um, we just hope that uh the secondary Petaluma teachers um will give us a chance. Uh, we will work with them. Uh, they ultimately are the ultimate deciders of, is this really a tool? That's going to help them uh maximize what they can do with all students, all backgrounds, English learners, Latin, uh special ed. Uh, we wanna help with that. And uh, so I look forward to the ongoing discussions. Again, thank you so much. Uh, I apologize for dropping out earlier.
Any last questions, thoughts?
Do, do we know our, which of our, I mean, not which, uh, whether our, our main feeder districts, uh WA and Adobe, Old Adobe, you know, what, what they do on common assessment?
I, when I brought this up, I, I was at a meeting with, so the two, the two districts you just named, superintendents of WA and Old Adobe, and I started to talk a little bit about just where we were heading and what we were doing with common assessments. This was more in line with at El- at the elementary, because WA and Old Adobe are elementary. And they're just lit up sort of, that would be great. I mean, if we could do a similar assessment throughout our feeder districts as well, if they're willing to kind of join forces, it would help our secondary, it would help our, particularly that transition between sixth and seventh grade. I mean, I think of Kenilworth as the example, I mean, multiple districts coming together, sixth graders moving to seventh grade, I think there's interest there. So I guess what I'm trying to say is there's, there's interest there from other feeder districts to look at common assesses at the elementary. Based on our experience and how things are going. So there's interest.
They weren't doing it correctly.
No.
And I would add that Mary Reynolds, who was at this last meeting, she was in conversations with Math Annex um, about bringing it to Mewoc School and was super excited when she was here, knowing that we were working with it. And so now being a secondary administrator, she's gonna be a, she's gonna be a resource for us.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Is everyone good if we keep moving? So we have some public commenters that have been here for two hours, so I wanna, wanna get to them. Um, so next up is comments from the public on non-agendized items. I will read all of the things, but um if you're here to comment on Math Annex, that technically is something that's non-agendized items, because reports and presentations fall into that. Um, so if you're interested in making a public comment, please put your first and last name in the chat, as well as the non-agendized topic you would like to speak to. Um, if you're here in person, please bring me one of these if you'd like to make a comment, and I will read the really fun part now. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will only be heard, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agenda's item period. Once that part of the meeting is over, that's right now, comments will only be taken on agenda items during discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Um, I have two in person, Dave, are there any from Zoom? Okay. Great. Um, so then it will stay a four-minute per person limit. And first up, I have Megan Fontaine.
Hi. I'm Megan Fontaine. I teach math and computer science, and I've been a member of the Casa Grande Math Department for twelve years. Um, I'd like to begin by stating that I absolutely agree with the concerns expressed by my fellow math educators about the adoption of the Math Annex platform. And I'd like to use my time this evening to specifically address some questions raised at a previous board meeting regarding CASP performance and potential alternatives to Math Annex. As you've heard from my colleagues, all educators in the district agree that collecting student performance data and using that data to inform instructional choices is a critical part of our work. As a math teacher, I also share the board's concern about unsatisfactory CASP scores, and I wanna do everything possible to support my students in their learning journey. However, the disastrous rollout of Math Annex this year has made it abundantly clear that this is not the best tool to meet the needs of our students. The Math Annex platform has not lived up to the claims made about its efficacy in the classroom. Furthermore, there are numerous existing assessment options that are free, high-quality, thoroughly vetted, and in many cases already in use in some of the uh schools in our district. Sorry, again. Uh, for example, the California Department of Education provides free practice CASP exams for grades three through eight and eleven, accompanied by detailed scoring guides. The Mathematics Diagnostic Testing Project, MDTP, provides a variety of testing and diagnostic tools for free. And the MDTP has been used by our middle, middle school teachers to assess student learning for years. Finally, there's the Illuminate Platform, which many of our educators have used extensively in our secondary classrooms to administer assessments, analyze their results, and inform instructional practice. These are just a few examples of high-quality resources that could be leveraged to meet the needs of our students. Here in Petaluma City Schools, we have literally dozens of highly-trained mathematics education experts, our teachers. And yet, the collective knowledge, wisdom, and experience of this in-house team has not been leveraged effectively in the process of creating a common assessment plan. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the board directs the district to engage in a genuine shared decision-making process to create an assessment plan for Petaluma City Schools. Encourage the district to leverage the experience and expertise of the mathematics educators in this district to build a solution that all stakeholders can support. I am confident that we can work together to create an effective program that feels genuine for our students, provides valuable data that teachers can use to inform their instructional decisions, and positively impact student achievement outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Kathleen Garvey.
So, um, I would, um, I'm going off a slide that I sent you earlier. And I'd just like to reiterate that, um, you know, we appreciate the, the effort that's being made to put these common assessments into place, and we think they're very important. And uh, we're just um not feeling that, or feeling or thinking that this is the appropriate type of assessment for our level and for the number of students that we're working with. So, um, the, so this deep dive, this qualitative analysis is something that we actually learn and collect every time we give a test to our secondary students. So we're very familiar with the kinds of answers they give in particular situations. It's um dealing with the students in a collective basis, because we're not just working with a small number of students all year long. We're working with about a hundred and thirty students at a time. And so we, um, we need to have data that helps us address the deficits when we're working with those numbers of students. So that was one of the things that uh just made this very difficult for me to take any action on. So I'd rather spend less money on the assessment and then more money on the tools that we can use to actually address these deficits and to, um, and to help these students. Because um just getting the same information, again, this is an assessment. So it's just telling us a lot of things that we actually know already. The same students are getting low scores. The same groups of students are getting low scores. Um, and what we need is a way of addressing those deficits when we have a hundred and thirty students. So, and, and this is not helping us. So um, what I'd like to do is continue this process, but I'm not, you know, with a different testing um tool. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dave, did we get any public comments in the chat? All right. Um, so then we All right. So then we will move on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. Next up, I will report on activities and correspondence of the school board members. It has been a light couple of weeks in post-graduation, almost post-graduation. Now we're finally post-graduation. So we've attended the adult education graduation ceremony, the year-end administration celebration, and a webinar about funding the next generation. And Blue Zones today. The presentation about Blue Zones, what was it? Okay, the launch of Blue Zones event. Cool. Love it. Does anyone want to talk about any of the things they attended? Adult Ed was like the biggest graduation we've seen in a while. So that was really exciting. A lot of good students and families.
Yeah, just a quick note. So funding the next generation, I attended a webinar that they hosted where they hired another polling group, much like what Charles was presenting earlier today, except this, they looked at statewide, where does children's funding fall on voters' concerns? And what are the will to support those things? And I'll say that, you know, the, and there was a much more recent poll done last month in, in May. And the, you know, it was statewide, so it doesn't have much to say to us here in Petaluma specifically, but kind of the, one of the main points that I got from the webinar was the more specific our proposals are for any kind of bond or parcel tax measure, the more likely it is to pass. And you got to be very specific on what you want and what you're going to spend it on.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, everybody. Now we will take comments from the public on consent agenda items. So if you're here for that, either bring me the yellow slip or put your name and topic in the chat. It's just, I know.
It is Jeff.
Our trooper.
Yes.
All right, I'll leave the chat open for a little bit. Again, this is only for comment on items on the consent agenda. So anything under item 12. All right, I'll leave the chat open while Sandra makes her comment, but I will call up Sandra Larson.
Thank you. My name's Sandra Larson, longtime Petaluma resident and president of the Petaluma Federation of Teachers. I just once again want to thank the board for the Contract for Adult Ed Educators. I love that you sort of did my work for me by saying that graduation you had seen. The work they do is amazing and touches so many lives. I think we don't, maybe one of us realizes more, but we don't really realize what they do. They're nationally known through AFT. Randy Weingarten here came and was so impressed. She still talks about Petaluma adult educators when she goes places. So that's wonderful. So thank you for that. Side note, we all know my goal is to get adult educators on the same pay scale as their colleagues. And this was a great step there. And we're very appreciative of that. It was a huge step. So thank you.
And as you know, my daughter graduated from our Petaluma Adult Ed School. So just so you know, back in 2000, so 23 years ago.
Awesome. Wonderful.
And future retirees.
I'm ready to retire. Yeah, I know. So we're moving on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I hear any motions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. We will move on to item 13, comments from the public on action items. So again, if any, if the one person here in the audience or anyone watching on Zoom would like to make a comment on anything under item 14, which is action items, please either bring me a yellow card or put your first and last name in the chat, as well as which item you would like to talk about. And then we can hear from you. All right, seeing no one in the chat and no one running up to me, I will move on to item 14.1.1, Board Meeting Planning Per AB 361. Do I hear a motion?
I move to stay in hybrid.
A second.
All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Move on to 14.1.2, Approval of Tentative Agreement to the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Yep, for adult educators. I'm not reading all that. I'm just not. It's great.
I move to approve the tentative agreement for adult education.
Yes, I agree.
A second.
All right. Any comments or questions before we take it to a vote? I think we're all very excited to see it happening. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Move on to 14.1.3, Approval of the Provisional Internship Permit. Jason, you're back. Tell me about this.
As you know, we have a number of positions this past year where we've had to use PIPs or STPs to bring people in as they're trying to get their credential or just before they get their credential. And this is another example of that. So we're hoping to bring this person in on a PIP for SDC in our transition program.
Wonderful. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the PIP.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. No business services. She's been busy with the budget. 14.3.1, Second Reading New Course Proposal Introduction to Agriculture Ag Basics. Has anything changed since the last time we talked about it?
No, just like to just emphasize with, with these two new courses, you know, Petaluma Junior High is really looking for different ways to really attract and retain students. And, and adding these two courses, they feel will be, will help them as well as align with our CTE pathways that we have at Petaluma High School. So.
Awesome. Do I hear a motion?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing?
Just a quick question though. Hey, I noticed that Kim Arts, you know, is the proposed teacher. So how does that work? Are we pulling back something at Petaluma High or what?
She'll be doing a zero period there. They'll be offering a zero period.
I think she's on, she'll be on a one, one plus two.
Yeah, 1.2.
She will be.
Cool. 14.3.2, Second Reading of a Different Course Proposal Conditioning for Athletic Performance. Same thing. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the new course proposal, conditioning for athletic performance.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? No. All right. Item 14.3.3, July Services Agreement Renewal Between the Regents of the University of California and Petaluma City Schools Regarding the California Reading and Literature Project.
So this is just a renewal to support our teachers with professional development, aligning with standards, supporting our English learners. And so it's been a great PD for our teachers. And so it's something that we'd like to continue with.
Great. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the, whoops, sorry, the services agreement between, on the California Reading and Literature Project.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none and seeing nothing from Student Services. We are moving on to item 15, which is Future Business. So definitely parcel tax discussion. Let's get that money. What else do we want to?
So that we're looking at about a three, as Charles said, about a three-month process? And then bringing, so it's September-ish, bringing him back?
I would say earlier, just to be safe, if we're trying to get on the March 2024 ballot.
As soon as he's ready.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thursday. Yep.
I'm just wondering, you know, that early stage for the parcel planning is kind of, you know, finding opportunities to hear from the committee of what the things that we need are, you know, that we need to be funding. And then thinking about, you know, Chris's great suggestion about, you know, the future, when we think about bonds, it should be integrated with master, physical master plan. Totally makes sense. So, you know, is that, should we be doing both at once, you know, as we're scoping, scoping, you know, what we would put in a parcel? Is this, is this an opportunity also to do some physical master planning?
I, yes, I mean, I think that what you should contemplate is doing an RFP for architectural services to do that. I would just like to caution you that you've got a whole new team starting in business services. And what this new team, because I don't believe that either, I'm not sure that there's a lot of experience on the bench with going out for parcel taxes and on any of the bench, except for me, as far as the amount of time and effort it takes actually doing all of this work to go out for parcel tax. I've done it about 10 times. So I understand the amount of work. And the new team coming in here does not know Petaluma, does not know the community at all, where I do. So it was relatively easy for me. So there's lots of things going on with rating agencies. There's a lot of mechanics to it. So I'm just gonna let you know that there's a lot of work and effort and time can, there, it takes a lot of time.
Are you, are you, are you saying separate out parcel tax and bond?
I'm saying, don't overwhelm your new team.
Exactly.
I'm saying.
Lean on outside resources or?
I'm not necessarily saying that. I'm just saying be realistic about what you're going to expect new people coming in to do. Because there's going to be a steep learning curve. So I'm just saying, like, I, many people have told me I've made this job look way too easy. And I'm just saying, try to be realistic about what you're going to expect. Because, you know, going out for an RFP is really where you should start. Maybe in the fall, you start thinking about an RFP to identify an architect, to do a master plan. Because I do think you should get started thinking about that, because it will take about a year to 18 months to do that. So I do think getting started sooner than later is a good idea. I'm happy in any capacity that I can to assist with that. I've got a ton of knowledge about what our facilities needs are. But also just focusing on the parcel tax, because I do agree that the need is really for funding to help support our schools operationally and programmatically. But that, that effort alone is going to take a lot of time. Because there's a lot that goes on to make that magic happen, both on the superintendent and on business services. I'm not sure if people understand the amount of, the amount that goes through that process. I mean, I've been through many processes where you have to go through and how much time I spent with consultants, talking about vetting the questions, vetting the polling, vetting all that stuff. There's a lot of time and effort that the business services and superintendent, i.e. the CBO and superintendent, spent on this stuff. And I knew the communities that I worked with. I didn't walk right in and do it. So I'm just saying, like, you guys just need to think about that. That's all I'm saying.
Any other future business items? All right. I don't believe we have any papers to sign this time. So I.
I think we have a lot to sign on Thursday.
Okay. Great. Because I'm not in charge then. We will adjourn this meeting at 8:25.